All right, guys, seven o'clock, so we're gonna get started. It is October 18th, this is the Tuckey Borough Planning Board. So first up tonight, we have a consideration of the minutes. Did anybody see anything on the minutes that you were just talking about?
That wasn't long to go through.
Yeah, I'm seeing. Oh, we have none. Did anybody see anything on the minutes that you were just talking about? I might add, man, that was a great job. All right, time to motion some of the minutes. All those in favor? All those opposed? Great. So we are going to quickly deviate from the agenda to appoint a member quickly. And I apologize, but... Sir, what's your name?
Russell, Steve Hunter.
Okay. I've never done that before, so do we make a motion?
No, you just appoint him to sit in for John Cameron.
Russell, you are appointed to sit in for John Cameron as a full voting member. Congratulations, all the rings have been hit. Let's go with him. All right. What we're gonna do first is we're gonna have a small public comment session to see if anybody has any questions about Planning Board matters, or any other things you're gonna go, or anything like that, and then I'll do a brief explanation as well. So, anybody? There's Steve.
Steve Hunter, and I have a comment to make on last meeting that you had, and I wanted to make it clear that as an abutter across the street, I think it was 405, government Wentworth Highway, the Ailies, I was not in favor of the stockade fence. I would rather see a dump truck and an excavator personally than a stockade fence, and I know one of the...he's not here tonight, but the gentleman that spoke in the sidelines would probably rather see a Model A car than a stockade fence. And the next person at the end of the table probably rather see a boat on a trailer than a stockade fence. So, thank you.
All right. Anybody? Okay, so we have number three items on the agenda tonight, three different applications. The process, many of you have been through this before, it's pretty straightforward. Basically, the application is presented to the board, the board has reviewed it previously, decides whether there's some jurisdiction over it. The applicant comes up, or sits down, explains to us what the project is, gives us a brief explanation, goes over any waivers or whatnot that it might need. Public has an opportunity to comment. Please state your name, your address to the board, state your opinion, pros, cons, anywhere in between. The applicant has an option, has the ability to come back, goes back and forth if it needs to. We just ask that everyone be civil, as we are all neighbors and friends of each year. And that's about it. Any questions? Okay. We are gonna change the order of the agenda tonight. The reason for that is we received a letter fairly late in today, and I'm gonna apologize for this, because we did just receive this, in regards to Merrimack Valley Development Corp. And basically, the letter was from one of the abutters, which I'm gonna give you a copy of here, which is Mr. Ford. Mr. Ford did not, and I think he is accurate, say that the notification for the meeting was not correct, because the abutter list that was provided was not accurate. And provided the example here. Basically, the lot was sold this spring, and that the RSA requires that the abutter list be accurate five days before the letters go out. By the way, you have to pull that information five days before. So rather than making you sit through all these other applications, we thought we'd let you know right from the start. And we apologize, we couldn't let you know sooner, but it's a second date of the letter we just received. Can you pass that down?
Do you want to have a copy of the RSA?
RSA.
It's actually five days prior to the deadline, submitted deadline, not when they go out. So there's the RSA. And this is, I printed out a copy of the Avatar database, which reflects the current owner as of May 4. So the abutter list submitted on September 21st was not correct. You can go online, we are here, and...
Is there anybody up here that can at least talk about the project at all?
You can have an informal discussion about the project, but we can't accept the application, we can't open public hearing.
I just wanted to talk about what we wanted to do down there, at least.
I've got no issue with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just like a pre-app.
So... We're all dressed up, we might as well go. All right, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna do an informal. An informal is basically a non-binding talk with the planning board, where they can present the project and say, hey, this is what we're thinking of doing. What do you think? Do you see problems with it? Nothing that said is binding at all by the board or by the applicant. So with that, why don't we go?
Okay. Let Diane, Jenny, and Tom first.
Not sure where you want me. I have some small-sized plans. If you don't have a copy of the plan, I can pass these out to you. Well, I don't have a plan on those boards with me. I should have plenty of these. So essentially, Merrimack Valley Corp. is the owner of the lots at the along what was known as Shawview Drive at the end of Black Bear Run in Xavier, France. And the proposal is to essentially consolidate seven lots. I do have, we have a couple of slides here. Essentially consolidate the seven lots that were, I guess, previously approved out there, and then consolidate, and then re-subdivide. And when we re-subdivide, we're looking to create just two lots that will be accessed by a private roadway, a private driveway, essentially a common drive that services not just these two new proposed lots, but also the Snyder Living Trust lot that exists probably without proper frontage at the moment. So this one common driveway will service three lots altogether, again, privately maintained roadway. And that's about it. Again, consolidate, re-subdivide, create two new lots, provide access to those two lots, plus the existing Snyder Living Trust lot. I guess I'll just leave it at that, and just open up for questions, comments.
So is the Snyder lot one of the three lots? Is you're allowed three driveways, three housing lots off the same driveway?
It is. On the larger part of the middle, this is the Snyder lot here.
So you're really taking the property you own and turning it into two lots, and the Snyder is an existing lot?
Yeah, we're granting that.
That has an easement?
Yes, correct.
Do you all have the access rights over this property, this common driveway?
Just for some background on this, this hasn't proved, I might get this wrong, seven lot subdivision on it. This is part of the subdivision off of Durgen Road that was interesting. See if I get this right, I'm sure somebody will tell me if I didn't. It was a subdivision that was started before the recession, it went bankrupt at some point, the town came in, had to take it over. The houses that were in there have a special assessment on them, if I remember correctly, to finish the roadway. The road was accepted as a town road, if I have this memory correct. Ian, is that the way you remember it?
That's the way I remember it, too.
So I know in my head, the question is, you're allowed, you're allowed three lots off of the single driveway off of the town road. We all know that, sure and right and it is only. I think in my, the question I have is because this was part of the development, and they have a special assessment, and they have quite a few things going on, what the obligation is to them to honor previous agreements on this subdivision, if any are? And I think that as a board, I'm probably gonna recommend that we get an opinion on what are the obligations to honor.
This is an existing easement that's on there that accesses that property in the back to Ospey.
Right.
And that is going to, we're gonna maintain that still. And talking to Jack Parsons about this, he was asking me questions as far as when I approached him in regards to this big parcel, that it just isn't, you know, feasible to build that big road at this time and have the seven lots there for the price of the road versus what the lots would be, would be, they'd be out of the budget to be able to turn that into the seven lots down there. So I'm talking to Jack, he said, well, he said, we have an issue with the Schneider piece. He said, why don't we try this? We'll go in with the two on a common driveway, if you wanna do that, as long as you give an easement to the Schneiders, so that they can make their lot a conforming lot.
I think it's beautiful.
So that's what he was suggesting that we do, so...
I think it's beautiful, you know, two lots versus seven, that probably can sell quite well. My only question is, this is just not the board, but myself, is where this is coming off of, was it Black Bear Run, is it?
Yes.
Which was a absolute, very complicated, you know, town, sort. What, you know, these people who live on this road have been paying for this road as a special assessment, and to say, all right, we're gonna come in, we're gonna knock in three houses off of the single driveway, it very well could be completely permissible?
Yeah.
Or just want 100% positivity?
Well, they made, when we were getting this permitted, they, the association, which actually I was a part of the association, because I own lots on Black Bear Run, they made it abundantly clear that they didn't want this parcel to be involved with Black Bear Run and the association, so that's why that side of the road is named now Shawview. So this side doesn't have any, isn't part of the association at all. So they're, we're gonna build the seven lots, they were just more looking at damaging the road, when we brought equipment in there and so on and so forth. We were talking about that at one time, and then, again, it wasn't, we just, now this is be our third year, you know, with the permits in place.
Yeah.
So I'm talking to Jack, I think this is the most economical way of being able to present this.
I think everybody there would be in favor of this.
Yeah.
I just would wanna make sure as a board, we were legally making sure that we...
I just wanna make sure that you got, you know, that everybody understands the logistics of what happened three years ago, so that they would, you know, if there is abutters here, like I know this is on, you know, we're just talking here, I wanted to answer any questions that the abutters might have, you know, until those people will try to accomplish.
Yep.
And we understand, we understand the comment, and certainly you need to get, you know, comfortable with that before you back in this plan, as far as whether there is any obligation on the owner's part to participate in.
And because we have a letter from Mr. Ford, we're gonna get that opinion, you know, we're gonna go forth and get that opinion before, hopefully, as long as the attorney gets back to us before the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Will you be sending something out to the abutters, asking what their objections, if any, or suggestions? I'd like to add something that's being missed. Mr. Thomas owned Lot 189. When we sold Lot, I think it was Lot 118, because he purchased those properties, they were, and they owned, the covenants and restrictions are gone. So those lots didn't even need to abide by the covenants and restrictions that were in that subdivision. Mr. Thomas turned around to keep the, and preserve the covenants and restrictions, and make sure that the abutters were happy, we purposely had our attorneys draft language into the deed to make, for future sales, nobody be able to sell those lots without abiding by those covenants and restrictions. So if it's a matter of having covenants and restrictions to preserve the lot and preserve the whole subdivision, or the two lots are being built, I don't think that there'd be an issue if we had the attorneys draft any language saying that we have to abide by covenants and restrictions and submit those as well, just like we were going to do on the seven lot subdivision.
I don't even know that that'll be necessary. It's just, I think, again, speaking for myself, not the entire board, we just need to make sure how this will be viewed as a town road, private driveway, such and so forth. I think in the letter Mr. Ford has that I give you, he did request me with you. Just for some background, Mr. Ford is the town engineer for the town of Wolfboro, the next town.
At the corner.
Yeah, he's at the corner.
Yep.
And I'm sure he will, you know, express his thoughts on that. I think we're just worried about the legalities of town road, three houses, existing subdivision, special assessments. It's a very complicated piece of...
Just wanna see if there was any abutters that are here that want to speak in regards to the project.
Anybody?
I'm no longer an abutter. I was an abutter, I owned Lot 13 and sold it in May. But I, just from sitting here, I saw it looked like the easement that the abutters had for the Ospey lot has been moved.
Yes.
Does, do you have the legal right to move that?
In the review of the deed that I saw, it didn't describe it other than to say that an easement right of way shall be provided. We moved it to coincide with where we're terminating this roadway. It still terminates up to Ospey and at the same location.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm, I don't have a dog in the fight, so it doesn't matter to me. I just, for your benefit, if you're gonna come back in, I just would make sure that where it was platted, where it was platted and approved didn't create a dedication that he may now, or that person may, or entity, whatever it is, may have a right in.
We'll take a look at that. All right, so are you gonna be notifying all the abutters? What do you need from us at this point?
We'll need to get an update in the abutters list. We'll need to pull the abutters list no sooner than five days before the...
Submission deadline.
Submission deadline.
To the meeting. I've scheduled you for November 15th.
Okay.
And I don't like that date at all. Oh my God, it's 22 days prior to that is the submission deadline. So it cannot be more than five days prior to that. And then we'll need to submit, mailing...
Labels.
The label, right.
Absolutely. If I remember correctly, we needed to make a motion to remove the application to that date.
To a date, sir.
Yep.
But you didn't accept it as complete, and it's not ongoing.
Just to be fair, let's...
Maybe you should table it, since you didn't accept it.
We didn't accept it. Let's, can I have a motion to table this application until the meeting on, what was the day we started the...
November 15th.
November 15th. All those in favor?
Okay.
All those yes? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Okay, next on the agenda is a continuation of Clark House Family Trust, which refresh everybody's memory, is a condominium subdivision, attached map 2-1-67. Just for reminder to the audience, we did close the public session on this, we're gonna reopen it before we have a comment. We did ask that the board members, for a legal opinion on the question of whether drainage can be added if there are no changes to a physical property on condominium subdivision, meaning that we're just taking an existing piece of property, doing a condominium subdivision on it, or changing ownership, if there's no actual changes to the property itself. So we did get a legal opinion back from Roger Murray. I'd like to may have a motion to release it to public record. I'll make the list.
One second.
All those in favor?
Agreed.
All right, so I'm gonna read this for the public record. "The Planning Board has inquired of me as to whether it can require drainage and road improvements as a condition of approval of the Clark House condominium. For the reasons set forth below, it is my considered opinion that the board can require such improvements in connection with the subdivision approval, but I question whether it can do so here." It's a adjournment. All right, "Section 3.7 of the Tuckey Borough Subdivision Regulations provides, 'The Planning Board, as a condition of approval, may require the subbidder to pay proportionally for necessary offsite improvements, the streets and/or utilities required by the development. Subbidder may be required to pay that portion of the cost which bears a reasonable relationship to the needs created by and the special benefits conferred upon the subdivision. Thus, the threshold question is whether Allen Road is in such poor condition that it cannot provide safe access to Unit 2. It is my understanding that no changes are being proposed to the two dwellings presently on the property or to the property itself. What is there now is identical to what will be there if the application is approved.'" RSA 356-B5 provides, "In part, neither shall any condominium be treated differently by any zoning or other land use ordinance which would permit a physically identical project or development under a different form of ownership." Section 3.7.1, "Governing the procedure in the event of offsite improvements are required," states, "The board must make findings supported by the evidence in the record that the improvements are required to accommodate the needs generated by the proposed subdivision. The board must determine the extent of the needed improvements, the board must determine the anticipated cost of the improvements, including engineering and administration, and the board must determine the proportionate share to be paid by the subbidder. Here, the improvements must be required by the conversion to the condominium form of ownership, and the application can only be required to pay a proportional share of those costs based on the number of properties using Allen Road." Roger Murray. It wasn't really the clear-cut yes or no I was... Does the board have any thoughts about your legal opinion before we open it up to public?
I think he just threw it back to us.
I think he hunted it, yeah. All right, so we're gonna open it up to the public. I see Mr. Reins is here tonight, it looks like Attorney Walker is here tonight. Jim, shall we?
I just, I was here to answer any questions, you know, I could have answered the question the way Roger did at the last meeting, saying you have the right, but since there are no physical changes, as I said at the hearing, if this were denied, the drainage problems that were described still exist. Subsequent to the last meeting, I learned that the Clark House Family Trust has done all of the maintenance of that road, and the only contribution was $70 from the abutter that was raising the concerns for the last 15 years. So she took it upon herself, as trustee of the trust, to do some drainage improvements last year, and I have photographs of those. But, you know, the issue, and I brought, these are photographs of drainage improvements that were done. And I also have photographed, just so the board can get a general lay of the land. If you're, if you're standing, this is, this is the McWherter Drive, this is the driveway to Unit 2, this is, so you're just looking up, and you can see that generally the slope of the land...
And this is 109.
109 is up there, so the general slope of the land is cross slope. There are wheel ruts in the road, some of the drainage, some of the drainage runs down on the Meredith Stanley Clark House roadside, some runs down the McWherter side, and when it gets to the McWherter driveway, whatever's running on the McWherter side appears in those photos to be going down the McWherter driveway. Some, there are some things that could be done if that was a problem for the McWherter property, but I really don't believe, as Roger had said in his butt, I don't know that it's applicable in this case, because those drainage issues are gonna exist whether this is approved or denied.
So, I don't know where the, I'm bottom quarter, Allen Village, Allen Road. I don't know where the number of $70 came from, Meredith. The only money I've ever given you is for snowplow last year. I also am not aware of who exactly is paid for the improvements. I've never been approached to pay for improvements. I know actually Steve's been down there, and the improvements that Steve Hunter did to the road are the only ones that really have survived. And part of this problem is a result of the work that got done last year, as well as the issues I raised prior. So aside, I guess, secondary maybe to the drainage issues, which I still maintain, have been caused by the work on that side of the road. I question, I, I do not believe, I think the issue is that the application is for a subdivision. And the state is clear that you cannot treat two types of ownership differently just because of the type of ownership. But it also states that the subdivision, or the conversion to condominiums, has to be treated, has, you still have to follow the local zoning rules. And for me, it comes down to one question. The application for the subdivision is for two lots. There's only 1.7 acres there. How do you get two lots out of 1.7 acres? The minimum requirements for that zone are one acre lots. So I think that's the starting point, to consider the application. If the answer is, you couldn't walk in the door and get a permit to do what you wanna do with this proposed subdivision, then I don't understand how you can move forward without a variance. So that's, that's the, I think that's the basis of the objection. Then with the variance comes all the other requirements to make sure the drainage is correct, and all that kinda stuff, so...
Troy.
You obtained a legal opinion from your counsel at the last meeting that says that this is a permitted, doesn't need to go to the zoning board.
that says that this is permitted, doesn't need to go to the zoning board. As was just stated in the statute, says you can't discriminate based on the form of ownership. Anyone who has a lot in Tuftonborough can build two dwellings on it. There are two dwellings on this lot, so the lot size and the fact that, though the objection is trying to equate it to two lots, which would allow you four dwellings in Tuftonborough, this is a condominium conversion of the existing property. So, there are two dwellings that exist presently. If this is approved, it would still be two dwellings, and that's all that would ever be there. So, that is why it's not discriminatory and why it is permitted and doesn't need a variance, which I think was pretty clearly outlined by your counsel at the last meeting. So, I just think it's, I think it's ripe for approval. I don't think there's any reason for it not to move forward.
Is anybody else?
Troy. Just to elaborate on that, I think to address your point, the acreage is one seven. Perhaps that's not sufficient from a subdivision perspective, but this is a vested, non-conforming, you know, use. It's grandfathered. And when you have a vested, non-conforming grandfathered use, you can convert it to condominiumization by virtue of the condominium statute. RSA three fifty-six B five, which Roger Murray cites, says that you can do that. So, that's all they're doing. They're taking one existing use, converting it just to a different form of ownership. Nothing changes. Now, a blade of grass is gonna change. If there's a pre-existing water problem, it exists. If there isn't a water problem, then it doesn't exist. They're not gonna change the water situation. And I did talk to Attorney Murray today in anticipation of, you know, what was he gonna say? And he was very good about not telling me what he was gonna say. But he did indicate that if there was a water issue, that that's a civil matter, you know, between the parties. It's not really a planning board issue if one party is doing something to somebody else they don't like. But to me, it's very simple. There's two houses there. If you approve this, there'll be two condominiums there, and nothing's gonna change your driveway. You won't even know. And that's the whole purpose of the statute, to say you can convert to the condominium form of ownership without any requirements. So, we do it regularly in other towns, and it's a very straightforward process, because the only thing that changes is the title, just the deed. Nothing else is gonna change. The dirt isn't moving at all over there.
Three fifty-six doesn't substitute for local zoning regulations. And to me, it's, again, I've said it a couple of times. I think the test is, if you walk in the door to see Jack and tell him you have, and by the way, I don't dispute the existing conditions. I don't agree that they're grandfathered. There's no need to grandfather them, because the use of the property is permissible. So, the two structures are fine. Actually, Jim helped me with that last time. But I do believe that if this was a simple condominium conversion, which the application says it's not, it says it's a subdivision, the test is, can you walk in the door to the town, say that I have a 1.7-acre parcel of property, and I wanna subdivide it? And the answer to that is no, based on the dimensional requirements that the town has in the zoning. So, to me, it kicks it into, wait a minute. This is not permissible by our own zoning. This needs a variance. And that's the route I think it needs to go.
But what you are permitted to do is build two residences on one lot.
The existing, the existing lot, if,
And I think the difference here is that the attorneys are saying, this is permitted by zoning, because you are allowed to build two residences on one lot.
Right.
And therefore, you can condominiumize that.
I don't know about that part, but.
So, and what you're saying is, you can't subdivide this legally by zoning in a traditional subdivision, because you don't have two acres. So, it's not permitted by zoning, so you cannot. So, it's a very complicated issue.
I don't think so, but.
Okay. Did I get that interpretation correct?
Yeah, I just, for the record, I just, so, by both state and town definition, condominium conversion is a subdivision. So, we have to file a subdivision application. But as Bob just said, the application didn't ask for conversion, but I will read what's on the application that I submitted to you under the subdivision application. Project description, "To convert subject parcels, two year-round homes to two parcel condominium units." And then in the cover letter, I said that, enclosed, please find what we believe to be a completed application for a condominium conversion for property owned by the Clark House Family Trust. So, we clearly asked for a conversion. This, to equate this to a conventional subdivision is, it may seem logical to a layperson, but that's just not what we're asking for. And as I said, if it were, if we were asking for two lots of conventional, then there could be four dwellings down there. With this, there can only ever be two.
I think we've beaten this one pretty well. Any last time around? Alright, without a re-closed public session?
Good.
If we approve this as a condominium conversion subdivision, the new owner can take that one condominium and sell it?
Correct. You can sell it, but there's, just like any condominium, there's gonna be common area, there's gonna be.
Right, right, just like any condominium, right. Then he could do it as he pleases.
Two different owners.
Two different owners.
Right, with shared common area, just like you would in any condo anywhere. So, I think we're dealing with two issues here. One is, you know, whether it's permitted, which we have legal opinion from our attorney saying it is. And if we're not gonna go with our legal opinion from our attorney, why are you gonna? The second is the question of drainage. I think the point, in my opinion, is valid that it's, I do not doubt that there's a drainage issue there. I did drive down the road, since I drive by about ten times a day.
I drove it down as well.
But we are changing paper. We are not changing dirt here. We're just changing ownership. But of course, what does everyone else think?
I agree with you, if it's same owner, same thing, just a different name.
Yeah, build same way. In that case, we have a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, do we have?
We have conditions.
Yeah, let's get the edition.
So, one condition would be to receipt a favorable review of the condo docs, because we have not received that from town council yet. So, that should be a condition of approval. The four corners of each unit need to be set, the monuments, and a certificate of monumentation needs to be submitted, and then an as-built plan is required to be submitted. Those are the conditions I have.
When you do a ground condominium, you don't need to do an as-built, because the setting of the monuments of the unit boundaries.
I thought you said you were gonna submit it as-built, though, at the last meeting.
No, so that, when you set those pins, that's the as-built.
Oh, that's the as-built?
Yeah.
Then take that off. I misunderstood what was stated at the last meeting.
Can, whoever would like to make a motion, if they could grab that piece of paper from the end and read that very thoroughly, and maybe if they would like.
Okay, if I can read this. I would like to make a motion that we accept this with these conditions. A favorable review of condo docs, which has to be submitted by the town council. The setting of the monuments of the four quarters of each unit, and submit the certification of monumentation.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, I need a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? There we go.
Thank you very much.
Would you like a copy of the opinion or?
Yeah, great, just for the file.
One to Jim, one to Randy, and then ask and block.
Good.
Randy needs.
That'd be great, thank you.
Do you want to scan this and email?
Yeah.
I do. Randy, right there. Right there.
Thanks. Thank you all.
Good, sir.
Well, he submits the appeal to the zoning board of Justin. He has twenty-one days. Oh, I'm sorry, thirty days. Thirty days from the date of decision and the bound of appeal. We're not gonna deal with that yet.
Okay, item number three on the agenda is Lanes End.
Lane's End.
Yep, Lanes End. I am clearly and utterly conflicted on this, so I'm going to recuse myself. And someone's gonna fill in for me. I believe that's gonna be Bill.
It's gonna be me?
Yep, it's gonna be you. Oh, there's a cheat sheet. Alright.
So, Bill, I think the first thing we need to know is whether or not the property's changed hands, because if it has, we need a letter of authorization for Susan and David to represent the applicant. And we also need, we don't need it for this meeting, but we'll need it for final approval, a new cover letter of the application. Not cover letter, but a new application.
We have that too.
Yep.
So, this project is for the parking of trailers, and Lanes End Incorporated. It's a tax map two dash one dash eighty-five. And is the application?
It is, as a break.
With the exception of?
Yes, what we were, yeah, so they can take jurisdiction, and then you can ask the applicant to just submit. Or do you have them already?
I have them already.
Okay, perfect.
The new owner is T. Fillion, what was it? T. Fillion Marine Storage LLC. And this is Mr. Fillion right here, T. Fillion. And here is the new application with his signature, authorizing David and I both to be agents. Part of the conditions of purchase were that David continue with getting this approval. Here's another letter from him, that he's the new owner and.
Okay, so the application's complete, and the board can accept jurisdiction? Thank you, so.
Do I have a motion to accept jurisdiction?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, then just allow the applicant to see.
Okay.
I think I had submitted a packet for everyone with the cover letter explaining what's going on here, as well as drawings. It's an existing, an existing use on the property, where there are trailers scattered all around the buildings. And they want to have a, they want to have a plan of how the trailers will be placed, so that when they're working on someone's boat, and they're storing their trailer on the property, they know where that trailer is. They can easily retrieve it. This is not to store boats on trailers. These are empty trailers. There may be boats on trailers for.
So, this is the, this is the storage area here, correct?
Yes. That's an old, this is a survey of existing conditions.
Okay.
That's the plan.
And then their parking area is where they're proposing. Oh, and along.
Right, there's room for forty-one spaces, and they range in size. Some of them are for small, like jet ski trailers, and some of them are for bigger, possibly a pontoon boat trailer or something. Most of them are in between. They, we came in with this a couple of years ago, actually. I don't know where the time went, but. And there were questions.
It's been two years since. It's been a while. Yep.
And there were wetlands issues. And so, in the interim, David has been to the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Wetlands Board, and gotten approval for the fill that's in the parking area. He's had White Mountain Survey come in and do an existing conditions survey plan, which is this one that's underneath. Shows all the buildings on the lot, and all the driveways and the parking areas. And he's also gotten approval from Army Corps of Engineers, as required. He has, the butters have raised concerns about it two years ago. He's attempted to address those by installing a stockade fence along the Lanes End Road. And he has planted trees and shrubs, and he's got pictures that were taken today to show what it looks like today.
There's two sets here. One set shows the outside of the fence going along the roadway, and the other shows the inside area where the trailers exist.
That's the parking area. So, these parking area scenes, the only thing that will be changed is there will be posts installed, one post for every two spaces with a number, so they can identify where the spaces are on the boats.
Very organized.
The fence is along the road right now? This is an example of our area. We have it with Melvin Dodge. This is a DNIL Realty Corporation, which is one of my companies. But this gives you an idea of when we already did this one over quite a few years. And this is what we're trying to accomplish now.
This is in Melvin, it's behind the.
The old KRB or Thomas Chezon Marine Company, or you go through about six names. It's presently DNIL Realty Antique Showroom.
So, this is the view when you're driving down Lanes End Road. Now, two years ago, we had proposed the fence along the road. It had two gates. It had a gate at each end. And this gate down here, closest to the water, has been disabled. It's not, it's not functional. So, they're only gonna use the one gate up nearest the pavement that goes into the storage area, the service area. Here's the main road into the service areas right here, and it's paved. And so, this gate here, which is down here, is gonna be an exit-only gate for when the, when the boats are finished, they come out, put them on the trailer, and then. Excuse me, exit that way. Do you want a copy of this?
Did you see?
Yes. I said I had him two cats. Because we didn't have to change that, that's my question. Same to you, I gave it to you.
Oh, oh!
That's mine.
Yours, okay. So yes, you didn't see it?
It's...
All right, great. Okay, um... Just... Does, does the board have any questions for the applicant at this point?
Seems clear.
Okay, then we'll open the public hearing on this application. Are there any questions or comments from the public?
Everybody's cheering.
Just staring at me. Yes.
Joke, joke, joke.
Um, first of all, I would like to know whether or not you're going to read into the record the letter that was sent before the last hearing, because that never took place. So, the letter that was sent from David Spalding, one of the other Butters?
That was back two years ago.
Right. I'm just curious, as protocol of formality and whether that should be...
What that letter acknowledges is the fact that he hoped, because we cleared it, why the town would let me clear the lot without going through all sorts of processes. But you can clear a lot and log it wherever you want. It just depends. And they were concerned about the open area in their letter. I have the copy out in the car, keep on going.
I have it here.
Okay, good. And basically, he was saying, I hope there will be a fence put there.
Right, which you did.
Which we did. And he didn't want one that would be a chain link fence, which you can see the prints that went around here. My previous one is an area where it was chain link. So we made this one so that it had, and then we put shrubs, which I... And they will eventually grow, obviously, to try to act as blinds likewise.
Why don't I read this letter? Into the writer. So that, uh, it's all on the table. Uh, this is from David Spalding, beneficiary of House Trust, 12 Lanes End. And, uh, letter is sent in lieu of being present at the October 20, 2016 meeting. It's located in Los Altos, California. As you undoubtedly know, the site for the proposed trailer parking has already been cleared and leveled. In September, my family spent a month in our Melvin cabin on Lanes End and were disturbed that this large project had been started without any prior notice. At this time, my comments are as follows. One, this project is a terrible eyesore, which will have a large impact on the value of adjacent properties along Lanes End. Not having an opportunity to comment on it prior to implementation is very bad of the policy. Two, if the project is allowed to proceed, at the least, it should be modified so as to minimize the impact on the value of the adjacent properties. This would require an attractive opaque fence at sufficient height to shield the openness of the trailer parking, probably six feet or more. It should certainly not be a chain link fence with slats. Fence should further be shielded by fast-growing landscape. Just because Lanes End Incorporated is largest property owner in this area is no excuse for being allowed to proceed with a project like this without prior comment by affected neighbors. If the project is approved, as is, I certainly hope the tax revenue received from this use of the property is sufficient to compensate for the reduced tax revenue from the adjacent properties. Respectfully, David Spalding, Los Altos, California. So, and since that time, the...
We did precisely what...
Fence has been installed.
Did precisely what she asked.
And we put it, you put it just, just under six feet, because a fence six feet or more is classified as a structure. And has to be, meet setbacks, which it actually does meet setbacks.
It meets setbacks.
But...
An under-six-foot fence is something anybody can do on their property. Goes over six feet, and has special requirements.
Matter of fact, we had to get a permit for that fence from Jack, and we do have a permit. Before we built it, we had a permit.
I don't know if there were any other letters. This is, I don't have a copy of it. I thought someone else sent an email, but I don't have a copy of that.
You want to look through the files?
While you look through that, I can just... This is where my file is. If we had it, it would be in here. She has it. Yep, she can... Well, I can wait, because if you want to, I don't want to mess with your process. I'm Jill Promel, and I live across the street from this area. I appreciate that the fence and landscaping have been done. They look very nice. And I appreciate that the environmental impact of the wetland destruction has been remedied and taken care of, because that was also a big concern. Um, I'm still concerned about the tree clearing that happened. I know that, you know, it's apparently allowed, although it happened without the filings done in advance. And I'm concerned because of a single line of trees that's left by the road and by the power lines, because I'm really afraid they're going to blow over. We did have one last winter that came down and took out the power lines. And it was a smaller tree this week that came down.
Well, then came off.
But I just really, concerns may not know if that's a power company issue or not, but that's a big concern to me, of living there, year-round, in the cold winters, to have the power go out. Because they are 50 to 70 feet tall, you know, trees, and they were protected by an acre of woods behind them, and now they're just there. And the wind is definitely different coming across to our lot than it was before that acre of land was cleared. Since this is a residential zone, I'd like to see the approval have some conditions limiting the hours of operation. You know, perhaps to seven to seven during the season, you know, and some lesser hours when it's off-season.
For, excuse me, for parking trailers?
Yeah, for moving them in and out. I'm just saying.
The service department will be doing the moving, uh, putting them out, you know, bringing the boats in, be the customer. And then the boat would be unloaded and the trailer parked by the service department.
Perhaps I might say, Tim, would you let them know what your hours of operation are?
Uh, eight to 4:30 Monday through Saturday. Currently, when we get busy, we start at seven. This time of year, we're open, we open at seven. Occasionally, might work five, 5:30. Myself, someone else, you know, we slow down. But normal operation, eight to 4:30 Monday through Saturday. And with a little increase in the busy time, but certainly not running equipment at seven o'clock at night, and not sooner than seven in the morning.
I have no issue with that. I'm just saying, I think it needs to be spelled out as a condition is my concern, because that could change. I also, um, would like it to be conditioned on prohibiting boat storage on top of the trailers, except for maybe the couple you were talking about in your application that says, you know, they'll be there waiting for someone to come pick them up, because that will definitely be above the fence. If they're covered in any kind of a plastic or tarp, that would be rather ugly. And I don't see why those couldn't be stored wherever you're storing things now, closer to the buildings. I would like the light, any lighting prohibited. I appreciate that the application says none is proposed, but proposed and banned is another story. So again, it can be not there now, but it could be added later, and I would like to see the protection of not having the lighting, because even the lighting on the one building you have on bothers me at my house. That's because it comes on, it's on all night now. It didn't used to be in years past, but I like it to be dark.
The town zoning does have a lighting ordinance within it that addresses lights shining on neighbors' properties. So if you think that's an issue now, you can, you can go to the code officer and ask him to check that. And if they were, same thing would go if they wanted to put lights in. I mean, they're not going to just put lights in for the sake of putting lights in, it's too expensive. But if there becomes a need for it, then they would have to make sure that it meets our regulations.
And the other issue is, what is the definition of a trailer? Because the application is wording "trailer parking." It does not say "boat trailer parking." It just says "trailer parking." And I'm concerned, I would like it to say "boat trailer parking," and without boats on it, just trailers, because of that lower profile, not being above the fence. And I'm concerned that there might be camper trailers or RVs parked in there, so I would want to make sure that that is restricted.
That's fair. I mean, there's no, there's no plan or intent or desire to put other types of trailers in there.
And I understand that, I just, that's why I would like it spelled out, so that it doesn't happen in the future. Because I fear if it's not specific, you know, it will creep in at some point. Who knows?
Over time, things may change hands, and somebody else...
Exactly, exactly.
The example would be, the area she's talking about was seven camping sites on Lanes End Road. I stopped the camping there, because we put our own condominiums in. They weren't stopped. You know, it said that no trailers, meaning the mobile homes that we had, where we had 85 to 100 trailers on Lanes End during those days. And we actually had the seven sites that, where she's talking about, where this area is right now, was seven campsites right up that road. And by the way, the road, the road is owned entirely by now, Tim and myself. Nobody, they have no ownership on the road. Lanes End owns the road, a 50-foot right-of-way down and a 25-foot road. It's all owned by Lanes End. So they travel on Lanes End Road to get to their lot.
Right of way, you know, to the little porch.
The lady, you know, the family, the family that, like I said, they just mentioned that trust. This was all in the Gardner Craig, Edith Brewster. All of Lanes End came out of that. And all of those lots among them, they were belonged to Gardner Craig and Edith Craig. And that's the people that were complaining, wanted the fence. That trust is the Gardner Craig, that's the balance of Lanes End, that ended up in a trust that went down through a number of generations. They have it, they have that, they come up once, once a month. And Mark, as a matter of fact, good friends with him, they're nice people. And I think they made a comprehensive decision when they saw them, what we were doing there, and they made a good letter. You know, I may, I'm glad they did. But I believe in originally going to you people, it talks about that this is a parking area, but we, it says, she's concerned about what it says, just trailer parking, is that correct?
Right.
Yep, and I think Tim, Tim and I is going to be, is the owner, I should. As of today, he's one week in a saddle. So, so... So I would say he would be the one right now to answer Jill's...
Sure, yeah. I have no need to put lights in there. I'm happy to, to have that in the conditions. Were there, you know, your hours of operation, seven to seven. I sure as hope I don't have to be there later than that, and that's fine with me. Like it's on the shop, all I got to do is click a switch and shut it off. Honestly, I don't even notice it's on when I get there and the sun's out. So it's probably been on bothering me for a while, and I apologize. You know, I want to be, I want to start off on the right foot here and be neighborly about all of it. And I, all I want to do is store some trailers in there. And like this time of year, springtime, we have a lot of boats coming in and out. You know, we end up where we can't move. So if we can stash some boats in there that are in a temporary movement, you know, to get them out of our way, or have the customer be able to go there and pick them up, and not have to worry about them crashing into something else on the way out. You know, I think it can work for both of us and, you know, keep everybody happy, so...
I might say the fact that the no boats are shrink wrapped and stored outside Lanes End property. That's been my policy, so that people that worry about the white or the blue structures, we don't store, we store everything in port.
Yeah.
Everything is stored indoors. If we want to store outdoors, we don't, we have that ability to go right down to Melvin Village, which is completely commercial, and that's the lot that you see with the trailers. We could easily put them right, which is open in between those trailers, and put them there. But we're not in the shrink wrap business. We believe that the boats ought to be indoors, without all the moisture and other problems that they get when they're stored outdoors, so that's just...
Yeah, I should say, I don't have intent to shrink wrap boats there either, stores there. And, you know, happy to, happy to write that in and anything that needs, any concessions that need to be made to make it at least functional for us.
So those were my issues, just to have those things spelled out in the approval. And then just whether or not the property gets reassessed with this additional space now used as business space, when it used to be woods. And then how will that affect their assessment, and how will it affect our assessment? Which was the point the other neighbor made in his letter. That's it.
You got those, you're taking good notes, right? I dealt with hand scratching, but any other public input? See a lot of faces, just, just observing. Okay, so you mentioned, uh, maximum hours of operation.
Said seven to seven.
This isn't a change of use. Let me just remind you of that again. This is an existing use on this property.
But not in that space.
They're not doing the servicing in that space. They're not, they're just parking. So the park, the things will be parked there 24 hours a day.
Right, but they won't be moving in and out.
Operations is seven to seven.
Yeah.
Five days a week.
Six days.
Six days, I'm sorry. Six days. No lighting, no additional lighting.
Clarify, the trailers, it is boat trailers.
No trailers.
I would say watercraft. That way it...
Watercraft trailers?
It could be a sailboat.
Yeah, jet ski trailer, yeah.
Generally, I wouldn't confine it to boat. And lighting, it would be my recommendation that, rather than restricting him from no lighting, because he is a property owner and allowed, that any proposed lighting be in conformance with town regulations in the future.
Is there any timeframe on boats that come out of storage on the trailers waiting for pickup?
Usually, they're fairly prompt, especially in the springtime. In the fall, they tend to not care so much about when it gets back to the market. But, you know, if a boat stayed sedentary in that lot for more than a week of the same boat, I'd say it would be an odd case.
Would you plan to park them at the backside of it instead of the roadside?
Well, my thought was, if we actually park them up against the fence, my, my plan is whatever would impact you the least. Most of them will, my thought is, you wouldn't even know they're there if they were parked up against the fence. Whereas soon, if you were standing in your second-story window and they were up closest to the shop, you might be able to see the boat. But if it was up against the fence, it would be hidden from view, so...
I think if it's up against the fence, it will show above the fence.
Um, most of them probably aren't going to break that sightline of the fence. But I'm happy to keep in mind, whenever I'm parking a boat there, whatever is going to work best.
I don't know.
Yeah. We'll see. If there's ever a, an issue, like a light being left on, come on by.
Go and see him.
Happy to work with you.
When you're walking.
Yes.
Bill already told me how great you were.
We'll see.
When I was walking.
That was Bill, I'll... I'm standing back.
I paid him.
Yeah, I'm paying him.
So what I have is any proposed lighting in the future would comply with town ordinances or regulations. Hours of operation be restricted to Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Can I interject? I want to make sure we're, with hours of operation, we're discussing trailers in that lot. If there's, for a swamp, and I need to come in on a Sunday and put some boats away, I'd like to be able to remain, to be able to do that.
So hours of operation for parking, associated with the parking area?
Boat parking area.
Your concern is with this lot having traffic in and out of there?
A lot of it.
Right, right. So it can be seven days a week. I mean, obviously, it can be seven days a week, because I, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, let's say... Okay, yeah, yeah, so let's, yeah, let's say...
I mean, people come and leave boats on the road.
Right, yes, yes.
So what if you're not open?
Seven, huh? Seven to seven daily as hours of operation in the...
Associated...
Trailer parking area.
Yeah, the trailer parking area.
With the watercraft parking area. Watercraft trailer parking area. Okay. And then I have the parking area be restricted to watercraft trailers only.
No, no.
Right?
Watercraft only?
Watercraft trailers.
Trails.
Right. Okay, I had trailers. And then the only other thing that Jill brought up was, she wanted, no, she wanted boat storage to be prohibited. So you have no intent to do that, so I would recommend a condition to be that boats, permanent boat storage is prohibited. So one, two, I have four conditions.
Okay.
Do you have four?
Yep.
Did we cover everything, Jill? I think so. So hours of operation, lighting, parking for only watercraft trailers in that area, and then permanent boat storage is prohibited. What is the town rules on signage? Because I know you did mention in your application that you weren't going to put up any additional signage. Is there some regulation of that?
The signage, if I can inject, Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong. In part of our packet, which is like this, is the fact that the Lanes End owns the road coming down to the entry to his shop. His sign happens to be on Lanes End's cul-de-sac, which is there. It's not built, but it's a paper cul-de-sac. And we had to give permission to him to be able to continue to use that sign. That, the rest of the road, there's no need for signage except for the one gate, which you know, there's a gate in a little ways that gives the hours and closes the shop off at night. And of course, that sign that's on Lanes End Road, I think there might be a picture of it in one of them. And it's the actual sign that leads into his shop area. And that's the only, and the other signage is on the end of Lanes End Road, which is Lanes End Rena. And there's a portable sign up there also that has the right-of-way deal. His attorney requested that he be allowed to continue.
That's a sign you're speaking of, by the drive into the service area.
Those are the ones that, right now, that were permitted uses on Lanes End Road, that his attorney requested that we be able, that he be able to control those and continue using them.
There's no signs involved in this application. And there is a sign ordinance, so if, there's a process for getting a sign.
That's what I wondered.
There is a process to get a sign, not necessarily a planning board process, but it's a code office thing. And I think it would be unreasonable to put some sort of restriction on this where it's not a part of the application.
Yeah, I just wondered whether or not you could put some, you know, sign this big right across the road.
Or a big banner, or a big banner on the fence.
Right, yeah.
Which would be objectionable. I wouldn't need for that either. Tim's pretty conservative, so I didn't think he would.
Multi-colors? Is that what you're saying?
You can.
Yeah. How nice. So nice that you can live through that.
But, okay. So I do need a motion, including those four conditions.
You want to do it, Kate, it's close to the...
I'm sorry. Any other public comment? All right, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion.
I will move that we accept this with the four conditions that we have just been talking about and that have been written down here.
A second. And those conditions have to do with hours of operation, any future lighting that would be installed...
In compliance with town regulations.
Will be in compliance with town regulations. That the use of this lot be restricted to watercraft trailers only, and that there be no permanent boat storage in this lot. Right?
Right.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Two years.
I've driven twenty at the two thousand and six.
Yeah, I thought it was a year ago. I started working...
I knew it was longer than a year. Fifty-seven, three years.
What do you think about this situation?
I'd love to see it in front of the Supreme Court. Which way would it go, to be honest with you? I don't know. So we discussed it, we're...
What's that?
I discussed it, we're...
My wife said, "You will pack if you go to that meeting."
There you go. Okay, well, we're supposed to have a great...
Three weeks. Anything could change, especially with snow, and the wind is this morning.
Very angry, I was at a new site, Simon says, "What's this?" I said, "Snow." Oh, no, that's not snow. Maybe that's just heavy frost. That's not...
I did that, I got a five-thirty look on it.
That's exactly what we bumped up.
And my truck was...
Yep. All right. Are you there tomorrow?
Nope.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you all in the board.
Congratulations. We close the public session.
We did, we did close the public session. Almost did close the public session.
All right, so we're now to the discussion items. Everyone had a chance to read the legal opinion in regards to the Carlton excavation operation on Sergeant's crossing.
Oh, he's here.
Okay. Did I have, did I have a motion to release the opinion to the public record?
I'll make a motion to release it.
A second.
All those in favor? So I'm going to read this for the public record. You're Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Okay. So what we did was, we received your information you had given us about grandfathering under the current zoning. So just to be sure, we sent it off to the planning board attorney to see if that met the criteria. So I'm just going to read his report. And this is part of the public record, and we'll give you a copy of it.
We have one.
John, the planning board has inquired of me, as, John would be the normal planning board chair. The planning board has inquired of me as to whether Michael Carlton's excavation operation on Sergeant's Crossing Road, his grandfather has an existing operation under section eleven dot eleven dot one of the Tufton Borough zoning ordinance. For reasons set forth below, it is my considered opinion that Mr. Carlton's excavation is not an existing operation under section eleven dot eleven dot one, and he is required to comply with the requirements of sections, of section eleven point eight of the ordinance. Section eleven dot eleven dot one provides in pertinent part any owner or operator of an existing excavation area that has filed a state and Hampshire Department of Revenue administrative notice of intent to excavate in the two years prior to March fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, may continue operation subject to planning board site plan review approval and issuance of a permit to excavate. It is my understanding that Mr. Carlton did not file an intent to excavate within the required timeframe. He therefore does not qualify as an existing operation under section eleven dot eleven dot one, nor does he qualify as an existing excavation under RSA one fifty-five dash E two one, which provides the owner of an excavation with lawfully, which lawfully existed as of August twenty-fourth, nineteen seventy-nine, from which earth materials, fish weight or volume commercially useful has been removed during the two-year period before August twenty-fourth, nineteen seventy-nine, may continue such existing excavation on the excavation site without a permit, subject to the following. D, the owners, the owners or operators of the existing excavation area for which no permit has been obtained under this chapter shall file a report with the local regulator within one year of receiving written notice of this requirement from the regulator and no case later than two years following August fourth, nineteen ninety-one. Mr. Carlton has not provided the planning board with any evidence that the excavation lawfully existed as of August twenty-fourth, nineteen seventy-nine, with earth material sufficient weight or volume to be commercially useful, which removed during the two-year period prior to that date, nor did he file a required report with the planning board by August fourth, nineteen ninety-one. It is my understanding that the town has no record of ever receiving the June nineteenth, nineteen ninety-eight letter on Water Industries Inc. Stationery. Even if it had, the letter does not follow the timeframes required by the Tufton Borough zoning ordinance or RSA one fifty-five E. As a result, Mr. Carlton must obtain a special exception, special exception from the Board of Adjustment and Site Plan Approval and Excavation Permit from the Planning Board pursuant to section eleven dot eight before undertaking excavation operations. Should you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. Roger.
That's good news.
That is a lot.
Yeah. So this all started, should I talk now?
We're going to open up a, it's a discussion, I guess, a public session. Go for it.
So, I don't know, to answer to the two-year no intent, first of all, we never received a letter from the town saying that we had to do that to comply. So the fact of the matter is, that property's been a gravel pit since early eighties, because Steve owned it back then. Then it went to Carl Anderson, and then it went to my father, and then it went to me. So we were surrounded by gravel pits. I guess, I wanted to, I knew that the town was in a big uproar because Mary Pinkam Langer was from the state, was coming down on Tufton Borough about the gravel pits. So I said, "Well, jeez, we ought to go get permitted." So I came in looking to see, well, what, how do we get this process started? Do I get an intent? What do I do? Jack mentioned about this letter. So I said, "Well, I'm pretty sure..." Well, first of all, we didn't own the property back in seventy-nine. So, but that stationary that that letter was written on, that somehow the town lost, you know, that was, my father owned Water Industries and operated for thirty-seven years, so it's no wonder why that would be on that stationary. But when I brought that letter in that day for Jack, he looked at the letter, he referred to the RSA. He said, "This is good. This will get you grandfathered. You do not have to go to the zoning board to get your permit." So I in turn turned to Jack and I said, "So, so now I can file for my intent?" And Jack was like, "Well, yeah, okay." So then I went out, and I got the intent, I went home, I filled it out, I brought it back the next day, which was first week of August. And this is, this is all that's become of that.
This landed you here now?
Yes, in the end of October. And I was told, three weeks ago, when I called Jack with the question as to where we were at, I was told by Jack that the September meeting was postponed. That's not the truth, because I received the minutes in the mail that were mailed out to me three days after I talked to Jack, which was two weeks after the meeting. And I was in Kansas on the twentieth of September, so I really feel like, you know, when I called here back in August to get some information about permitting or intent, it took somebody two weeks. They didn't even call me back. I had to come here, two weeks, like several phone calls, to several departments, messages. I mean, I just, I don't, I don't think it's right. I mean, I don't care about the grandfather because I want the permit. So all I want to know tonight is, is the data that I submitted, which there was a big pile of it, is that enough to get me on the road to a permit? Do I have to go to the zoning board? How long is this process going to take?
So, I'm going to attempt to...
Let's remember now that I have a gravel pit that are not permitted on both sides of me. So that's Freddie Sergeant and Mary Jane.
So I'm going to attempt to go back in my memory here on what brought this whole gravel pit, sand pit, operation problem that landed on Town of Tufton Borough, and not just the Town of Tufton Borough, but a number of towns. Basically, way back in the day, there was a requirement to file for existing sand pits, and most of them did not in the state of Hampshire. Very few. So this all continued on, and everybody just kept pushing it down the road, and pushing it down the road, and pushing it down the road. And the town would file, allow people to get an intense excavate, you know, pay the tax, so on and so forth, and everything went. Until one day, when the state came down and said, "Hey," I think it was at the Stockman's sand pit.
It was after the, yeah, the first new gravel pit in the town was ever...
That was done by special exception, and everything happened, you know, everything was done a full month.
In accordance with the RSA.
Before that, gravel pits and sand pits in the Town of Tufton Borough, like many towns, were just kind of, they're there, they take dirt out of them.
Very good.
So Mary Pinkam Langer came down, looked at it, said, "Hey, you know, we're missing some permit numbers off of this posting here, and, you know, we got a problem." So she went to the town, and it landed on the planning board's lap. So Town of Tufton Borough had quite a few sand pits. And we're not foolish. We know that we need sand pits, because how else would you build something? So we brought in Mary Pinkam Langer, and I think quite a bit of legal counsel, trying to do everything we legally could to allow these sand pits to continue to operate within the Town of Tufton Borough, without going back to the zoning board to get a special exception, and then have to start the entire process with the state and everything else. And if I remember right, we had existing pits, and, you know, you could avoid that if you met those criteria that we laid out, which was as liberal as we could be, and you stayed within what your original area that was drugged out was. You know, so you couldn't continue going a hundred yards into the banking where there were trees, you had to stay within that area that was opened up. And that operations that had been in operation for an extended period of time, prior to nineteen seventy-two especially, when zoning came into the Town of Tufton Borough would be grandfathered. This was kind of separate, but, so if you took in stumps, or you processed stumps or rocks, or things like that, you've always been doing it, that's a current non-conforming use on the property, and such and so forth. So when yours came in, we took it, sent it to the attorney, said, "Hey, can this fall under the, you know, rules that we laid out?" Which, again, we were as liberal with them as we could be legally, because we want these sand pits to continue to operate in the Town of Tufton Borough. At least I did, and I think the board at the time did.
I could see that based on the...
Yeah, and basically, the attorney said, "No, you don't." So the long and the short, if I'm remembering this correctly, is you would have to go to the zoning board and get a special exception for a sand pit to operate, and then fall under the requirements of the DES for what that's going to be. Which, if you want to know if that's good news, it's not.
No, it's not. And the fact of the matter is, is that the Town of Tufton Borough's been taxing us consistently for the last three years, just like they were before, when we did have intents to excavate. So unless they intend on cutting a refund check for tax money, which I don't think they do...
I don't think Jackie's going to get it.
No, I don't. And the other, the other caveat is the fact that this, these studies that I receive every year from Stantec about the pollution of the water table underneath our property from the landfill next door. So I mean, and as far as conforming and non-conforming, you can, we can make a field trip to the pit, and you can see that it's basically sloped on both sides, there's vegetation, there's no runoff on the property. It's impossible for our water to run off.
I don't know.
And the only runoff, the only erosion that's happening right now is the property next door is running over on our property and causing erosion issues from, from Mary Jane's side. So I have, right now, currently, I have issues on both sides.
I don't doubt that.
And what, and my question to Jack was, is what has Freddie and Mary Jane done to, you know, get these permits rolling for the, because the way I understand it, if you're not permitted by March, you're done, right?
That, I believe is accurate.
Right. So what, what, and so Jack's response was, is, "Well, we received a letter from Sergeant's back in eighty-one." Well, no, you didn't, because Mary Jane's property wasn't even a pit at that time. So I mean, there's a lot, I mean, it's, it's good, so I need to wear some hip waders down here.
The sand pit situation is an interesting one, to say the least. an interesting one, to say the least. So, a lot of the pits, like Fred's, um,
Damon Dine?
No, I mean, he's allowed to work in the area that he's, has open. That's grummed out.
Is he permitted?
He is permitted to do that. He falls under a grandfathering clause.
But he's not permitted, the grandfather is not a permit.
He, I believe has an intent to
Intent to excavate.
Right, but that's not a permit. There is only one per, to my knowledge, there is only one permitted pit in the town of Tufton Borough.
Correct. That is a
That's a wooden pit, right.
Wooden pit.
Stock pit.
When, when Mary Pinkam Langer came out and, we, and we were here for hours and we were beyond hip waiter level on dealing with this, you know, what we did as a board was, what do we have to do, or what can we do to grandfather these existing, you know, pits? This is what we came up with. This is what, the only way we had, and they fell under the criteria. So, that's what they got.
Can I ask a question? So what is the concern with the pits? I mean, what is it that the town needs or the state needs?
Money. What it came down to, if I remember right, was tax dollars.
No, I get that for, because they, they tax what's taken out and all of that, but, um, is there other concerns with reclamation or any of those other issues?
Yes, and part of what, and again, this is going back a while, and if anyone remembers this differently than I do, part of this grandfathering that, you know, went on was that when they were done, reclamation was going to happen within those pits.
Well, see, and that raises another point. Now let's think about this. You give me grandfather today, I go and I get the permit, because that is what I ultimately want. I do not want to play in the dirt. I want a permit for my property to make it legal. That's what I want. The other, the other alternative could be, and, and with that permit comes a conalteration plan, a reclamation plan and all that. Or, we could take and leave the property just the way it is right now, forever. We could put it in current use, tax, forever, and stop paying taxes on the land. So what, what benefit would that be to the town?
Absolutely none.
No, so the town, you need to reconsider all this. This is crazy.
We can't.
The town can't. That's a part of the progression he's talking about.
Your council made a decision.
If you want a permit, you have to go through the process, alright? Sergeant is not operating a permit. He's operating under, under
So, so as of March, it'll be done. Those, those two pits will be closed. Well, they don't have a permit. Have they applied for a permit?
They have an intent to excavate and they have a grandfather under the town.
Oh, so all you actually need is a grandfather.
They're retired, when operations cease when operations cease, they're required to file a reclamation.
So if Mike can prove grant, if he can get the grandfather documentation?
That's what this, that's what this was.
Right.
Doesn't need a grandfather and documentation. I mean, believe me, we would love to, there's nothing I would like to do more than say, please go ahead and keep digging, because, you know, we need sand pits, and that is the best use of your property, because it lies between two other sand pits on a giant sandbank.
Well, and those two ridges, that whole ridge material between us and Mary Jane, that all, that all belongs to us.
Yeah, I
They've mined out to the property line, in fact, too far.
It is the best possible use of that property, and it would be the best possible outcome, and there is nothing I would like to do more than say.
So what more am I gonna need for the DES other than Stantec's water study that we get from the town of Tufton Borough for free?
My advice at this point is you're gonna need an engineer. Preferably one who's dealt with the sand pits before.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What, what's an issue? There's a letter missing somewhere?
We didn't own the property back then. It was, it's always been a pit. When, when did you start digging in there, Steve?
Back when I was a boy.
Yeah.
And that was a long time ago.
I think it was 81.
But there was mention of a missing letter somewhere?
Yeah. And I produced the copy of the letter, but it was dated, I mean, my father bought the land in, what, 98? 97?
Where's the grandfather, if I recall correctly, is that you have to, it has to be continuously operated from that point forward. So, so if you stop that, operating at the grandfather and goes away, and then you have to, if you want to become active, you have to go through the permitting process. That's my, that's my recollection of what, what the law says.
That's what I remember too.
And when we passed the town ordinance, it was, it was a concerted attempt to take pits that had been operating right along and give them a way to keep operating without having to go and get a permit. Uh, because if you read the RSA passed back in the eighties, um, as of, I want to say around 1991, anything that wasn't operating before then had to start the permitting process, which was never done in Tufton Borough and a lot of other towns. Uh,
How big is your parcel?
Twenty-eight. And it's only about eight acres, that's because it's a pit. There's a two acre, there's a two acre building lot out by the road, and then there's twenty-eight acres.
I'm just gonna throw it out there to look at it from a different perspective, and this is a good way to look at doing this full if, if your pit had fallen under the grandfathering clause, the most you would have been allowed to do with it is work within that area that was already drugged out.
If you can't go anywhere, it drops off 100 feet into a swamp.
Okay. If, if you do, you know, I'm gonna assume that's all sand up there, because everything else is sand, right? If you do this, you know, by the special exception and you do the whole thing, then you're, you're only limited how much sand you can use by what the state, you know, the DES and the state and everyone in that town's only limits you to, which is on a boundary line, I think it was 50 feet, if I remember right, from, 10 feet? 10 feet.
Unless it's a contested.
Yeah.
Unless it's a contested butter.
Then it was 50 feet, right? And I think on, on Stockman's, we went to 150 feet on a contested butter, just. So what I'm saying is your value of the property or the value of the sand, which is valuable, is gonna be much more, you know, much greater if you were to go and do this that way.
With a permit?
With, well, even if you had gotten your grandfathered permit, you may only be able to pull 1,000 yards of sand out of there, because then you'd be out of area, you know, grugged out area. If you do this by special exception and you go through the state and you go through, you know, what you have to do, you can excavate whatever they'll allow you to, which could be 10, 15 acres, it could be hundreds of thousands of yards of sand.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not like you're walking away from hundreds of thousands of yards of sands in revenue, you're walking away, you know, by not having this grandfathered permit, you're using the sand that is in the area that has already been worked or opened up. So what you're saying?
I do, but the fact of the matter is, the whole thing's been opened up, so there won't be any more excavation other than what we've already opened up. It just keeps going down. But, but you'd have to see it.
I, I haven't seen it, so.
So, I hear what you're saying, but it's, it's a great thought, but there is no gain. Because, I mean, even on the two acres, I mean, we can, I mean, it's how crazy it is, even on the two acre lot, when we get done mining the pit out, we could come in and say, oh, we're gonna put a house up, and we need to move this material off the backside to, to put the septic in. And there's a 20-foot escrow out there. Well, you know, now all of a sudden, there's a view, and and there's, you know, 10,000 more yards of sand gone, I mean, off the back of that two acre lot, and it's already cleared off. It's, I mean, I know it's a different lot, but, I mean, is it really gonna come down to that? I mean, I, I was told that there was a pit in town this year that dropped a permit last year, and they haul more, more fill out there this year than they have in the past, so I mean, it just doesn't seem fair.
That would be an enforcement issue, but I don't know what that.
Well, I guess we'll talk to the engineer and go further. I guess at this point, I should probably get the back of the act from, from you that I
Yeah, it's at the attorney's office. I just rented the opinion today, so, or last night.
I'm trying to get a hold of that.
I will. What is your phone number again?
387.
Yeah.
3203.
And then I can just meet you, so.
Sure.
And drop it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next up, we have Harrison, property nine, everything waived, removal of deed restriction. Uh, just for some background on this, Mr. Wright is working on a property that was two lots?
Yes. Seven and nine Evergreen.
The long and the short of it is that one of the deeds mentioned, makes mention that um, that one lot is not billable until the cottage is removed and the septic is either replaced or removed. Um, so, we have the legal opinion on that, because the wording said petition the planning board, and the question was whether petitioning the planning board required uh, notification, um, so we wanted to make sure we were accurate, so I'm just gonna find that and read it real quick. From again, Mr. Murray, who's making fortune off this planning board. The planning board has inquired to me whether a public hearing with notice of a butters is required in order to address the conditions set forth in the approval of the subdivision shown on the plan entitled subdivision plan of Land and Tufton Borough, New Hampshire, property of Richard and Clara S. Sub, whatever.
Shubert.
Shubert. Prepared by Paul L. King, dated August 4th, 1992. Approved by the Tufton Borough Planning Board on October 15th, 1992, and recorded in the Plan Book 142, on page 73 in the Carroll County Registry of Deeds. These conditions state, Lot 2 is approved on the condition that it is subject to the restriction, that it is an unbuildable lot for residential purposes, and it is unmarketable until such time as, one, the existing cottage on Lot 1 is relocated to comply with the sideline setback requirements, and, two, a new septic system is constructed for Lot 1. The applicant must petition the planning board, that's where the question came up, for removal of the above conditions prior to when instructions on the said lot are conveyed, and see the same identical language appears in the deed dated July 12th, 2007, recorded at book 2644, page 764, in the Carroll County Registry of Deeds by which Evergreen Property LLC acquired title to the property. For the reasons set forth below, this is my considered opinion that a public hearing is not required to address the first condition, but that a public hearing with notice to a butters is required to address the second condition, unless the septic system is constructed on Lot 1. It is my understanding that the cottage on Lot 1 has been removed in its entirety. We confirm this with Jack, the codes officer, I believe we're checking for a demolition permit as well. And the planning board receives documentary evid, evidence of the cottage's removal. The board can vote to remove that restriction, since the determination is an administrative, not a discretionary one, no public hearing, no notice of a butters, and no public input are required. Removal of the condition shall be memorialized in a notice of decision recorded in the Carroll County Registry of Deeds. If the septic system were constructed for Lot 1, this, upward, Lot 1, the second condition can be handled in the same fashion as the first, however, it's my understanding that no new septic has been constructed, nor are there plans to construct one now. The septic system for Lot 1 is not shown on the subdivision plan, but the October 10th, 2018, letter from Evergreen Property LLC to the planning board refers that Leach Field has been located on Lot 2. Presumably, presumably, the second condition is intended to ensure that both lots are billable. Evergreen does not want to construct a new system, it could apply to the planning board to amend the original condition of approval that allow documentations fishing to establish that Lot 1 is capable of supporting the subsurface sewage disposal system, and the application to amend the original conditions of the approval will require a public hearing with notice to a butters, as with as with the first condition, the board's action shall be memorialized in a notice of decision recorded in the registry of deeds. There is no need to require a new deed. Should you have any questions, let me know.
Ted, do all this.
Sure. Thank you.
So Jack confirmed the building is removed. We requested that Ted provide some documentation to the removal of the building as well as the, uh, septic, which
Right. let me back up just a little bit.
Sure.
This was not just a deed restriction. This was a condition of approval for the subdivision.
Okay.
So they, they approved a subdivision that, a lot that created a new lot line that already violated the, the house already violated the setback. So somehow Paul got the board to approve it without variance.
He'd be tired.
What's that?
Is he be tired?
No. So the first thing I ran into is this, very difficult to prove a negative. Prove that the house is gone. So I, I got some photographs, and I get that one, um, you can pass them around. This is Google Earth. And I actually took these for DES. I'm standing where the house was.
Can you, uh, circle Wordville?
Sure. It's that big empty spot.
Yeah.
I mean, this is Paul Keane's plan. Just to show you, so you can see how it relates to where the building was. There's a building there, and there was a garage there, and this little photo.
Can I see that report for a second, just so we
But these are the plans. I, I got one for everybody.
So this, this originally was somewhere back in the
It's right, it, it's right in here, where the house was.
Okay.
You can see that. There's the balled house. It's right in here.
Okay, and this is now
Empty one.
This is now gone.
Gone.
Okay.
So, that kinda makes the whole thing moot about the, the septic system. It's, the septic system has been disconnected from the house that no longer exists, and what they want to do, uh, the Harrisons want to do is start right now by building a house here, exactly where the leach field is. So they're gonna dig all that material out, clean it, do whatever they want with it, and put a house in there. And here's a, this is the shoreline permit plan. Show you where the house is gonna go. So, I, what I'm trying to establish here is that
The septic's disappearing.
Right, and we're gonna create a new septic system for this, for Lot 2 here, for this house. The septic system's going up here, and for Lot 1, it'll be up in here, because there's a pit yesterday that all was found. Here's what they proposed. It's right exactly where the leach field is.
Is that only square foot? Is that, is that a house?
2,438.
So I think it's fairly safe that the DES would never allow you to hook that house into that old septic hypothetically.
Considering that it's underneath the house.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we're safe.
Yeah, it's, in fact, when I tried to approach this, that, that, because you have, um, you have to have 25% of the lot between 50 and 150 in an unaltered state, I went to them and said, look, this is a leach field, it's been altered. So, that would come out of that calculation. They said, oh no, we looked at your photographs and it's been, it's unaltered. They considered it unaltered. The leach field no longer exists, it's sort of the So, um, I guess that's it really. We've got, we, there's no proposal right now for Lot 1, uh, because they want to do this house first, and then within four or five years, they'll probably do house, the main house, this is the guest house.
So all we would need is a requirement that deed, again, if I read that right, that the deed be memorialized in the deed, took both Lot 1 and 2.
Yeah, I gave mine a big, I can't look at the other one. Some of my, hold on, let me see what it's called.
The DES actually picked up on this, but Freddie wasn't taking the deed. And said, we're not gonna grant you a shoreline permit until you straighten this out with the board, which is fair enough. But, um, so we're kinda stuck in catch 22. You can't take the, you can't build a septic for a house that doesn't exist anymore, and we're taking the, proposing taking the other system out, so we can't do that until we've got permission from the board that we've met the conditions of the subdivision.
So if I read this correctly
So if I read this correctly, it's just an administrative decision. The board can just vote to remove the restriction, and I'll create a new notice of decision, 'cause I highly doubt a notice of decision was even done.
Not back then, they didn't, we couldn't do the, well, there wasn't a board yet then.
Does everybody, uh, everybody feel good about this? I think this is pretty clear.
Yeah, pretty straightforward.
Can we, can we get a motion to, I assume, approve?
Well, to amend the conditions of approval to remove the restriction.
Exactly.
Is how I would-
And the only, the only condition being that it's memorialized, item one and two mentioned on the deed are memorialized on the deed.
As memorialized on the deed.
Right, all I, what I'm looking for is a letter from you saying the conditions have been removed.
I, I think if I read that correctly, we need two, one for each condition.
Yeah, that's what the letter says.
Yep, so, could I have a motion that we, God, this is more complicated than anything. That we remove the conditions as petition to the board, move-
Well, I'll actually take the language out of the, I'm gonna take the language out of the letter, if that's okay with you.
That's great.
But you're removing the restrictions, both.
For both lots.
Right.
Right.
According to the language.
Lot two is now billable.
Would be in a motion.
Yep, in a motion.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All those yes?
Thank you very much. The only question I had for you and me was, is your notice of decision more than one page? I would've brought a check with me for twelve fifty if it was only one page.
I know. I actually can't answer that because I would like to talk to you further.
Okay.
Because I would like to look at what the conditions were. Do you have any documentation?
Yeah, it's right on the plan.
Oh, okay. Are we gonna be able to keep that?
Yeah, you can, uh, edit, no.
So I can call you, um-
Somebody got it.
This, this thing?
The big one. Yeah, actually that, you will be able to read it.
That's enough.
There, is this it?
Get it. I'm very good. I'm not sure if it's gonna be two pages because I'm not sure how I wanna handle. I may want to, um, include the original conditions so that it's clear what we're removing.
Sixteen, fifteen instead of twelve.
Could be. Randy has a little, I'll pick it up at his desk.
Okay, that's cool. That's the actual condition.
Can I have this for now?
Yeah, sure. You, those are all copies.
It, it's possibly going to be two pages. I wanna, if, were there minutes that were produced from that meeting? How long ago is this?
Ninety-one, if you recall.
That's of course-
I'll have to do some research and see if there are any minutes.
Could be in the, Paul doesn't remember.
The minutes may not reflect though, like, the conditions, so I don't know. I'm gonna pull the minutes and we'll see. I'll call you.
The conditions are on the plan, and that's what got approved.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
All right, so the next up we have two thousand and nineteen proposed zoning change.
Okay, so I, I can speak to this briefly, I mean, you can too, but I just wanna remind the board that last year, there were two proposed changes, um, that the board had considered, and after several months, the board just couldn't come to a resolution that they were comfortable with to put this one on the warrant. So we only moved forward with one of the proposed changes last year and said that we would look at this again this year.
What was the one we moved forward with?
That's the one about the septic system?
Oh, yes.
That you didn't need a permit if it was, if one had failed and you were putting it in the same spot?
It was an as kind, uh, um, in kind replacement.
Right, you didn't need, you didn't need a special exception.
Okay.
Didn't have to go to ZVA replace a failed septic.
So I'm just bringing this back up with the board to see if you wanna consider-
Everybody want?
Mike Phelps. That was the Mike Phelps thing.
Do you guys wanna look at what the proposed amendments?
Yeah.
Well, you, you sat through this one.
It's A and B. It's the highlighted area.
I wanna read it too.
Basically, this is the ongoing saga of how many tents-
How many campers we can have on my piece of property. If somebody was one acre, they can have the same amount, isn't it?
And that's as far as we got. Um, but then, I mean, I could pull minutes. We could table this to the next meeting, and I could pull minutes so you could refresh your memory as a discussion.
I'm pretty fresh on it.
Yeah. So that's what that is, so.
And the next, the next meetings, we're trying to keep a light if I don't agree?
No, two meetings from now, I won't be here. Trying to keep it light. Who brought this?
I think this was Jack. Yep. I believe the issue is what, what, no one want, or you know, so we're trying to avoid, or the town is trying to avoid having, um, let's just say a non-commercial campground, so to speak, you know, not one where, you know, not one that charges, but where people have twenty, thirty, and their friends will always have tents and RVs there.
I have a hundred and fourteen acres. What if I wanna put like twenty tents up and I'm gonna have a party, and I wanna keep it up for the summer? So this would restrict that?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I would not forward.
So that's the discussion about whether we would like to recommend, um, this as, as proposed. So what do you guys think? Or have the audience, any thoughts?
I, I kinda, you know, said it last year, that this, this ordinance is the same for a one-acre lot as it is a hundred-acre lot, and I just think that it's kind of-
Yeah.
I mean, Tony can have the same amount of tents at his house as I can at my house, or blah, 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 and, uh, so, so that was one of the big issues and, and, uh, that I had with it. And, and I don't know that, I'm not sure that this was a town want as much as it was something that Jack was trying to have in his enforcement, because he had one complaint.
I believe it was an enforcement issue and he got it in for consideration.
Well, I think there was issues.
Yeah.
There was one big complaint.
I don't wanna put, you know, Jack's now or whatnot, but I believe there was issues.
Yeah, I think so too.
I remember him talking about that, yeah.
You know, I don't think anybody really, I mean, I wouldn't care if somebody, my next-door neighbor was having a party and they had thirty tents in their yard and they had music and band, whatever, as long as come Monday, they packed the tents up and, you know, went somewhere else, or even if they did it two or three times a year. I think the, what people are, or what Jack or anyone is trying to avoid is having a full-time, you know, campground, non-commercial, you know, non-charging campground, set up on a piece of property where a never-ending party, so to speak, occurs.
But it's seasonal.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's, I mean, that's what the amendment is. And if I remember right, when we talked about it last year, that was kind of a safety concern, was people aren't always smart and people are, you know, camping might occasionally drink alcohol. So the idea of people doing that after, you know, October thirtieth, maybe a public, you know, like somebody freeze that. Not why I'd camp and drink water.
Oh, ice fish.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah. I, I think the other thing that he was, was he didn't want me to buy a tent and live in it this year from the first of May till first of September.
I think you can as long as you have a septic. I mean, as long as you can dispose of your waste, the way it's written right now, I believe you can-
No, that's what I'm saying, but he was trying to limit the amount you could do of that in this, no?
He was trying to limit the number-
Right.
-of tents and RVs that you could do it with. I mean, I believe the way it's written right now, you could set up a tent and stay there as long as you could dispose-
Have a pool party or something.
Of your waste.
Right.
Between April fifteenth and-
Between the-
Well, to go back, before we passed the ordinance, was it two years ago, that, that put some restrictions, we used to have, uh, you had to get a permit for a camper, and, and it was like a two-week permit or something like that. And that wasn't real workable because people that use it as a place to come on the weekends, you know?
All summer long.
They use it all summer long. So we put some language into the ordinance that allowed for that. Uh, and then after that was passed, he became aware, or was then aware of issues with the wording and the way it had been passed. Uh, he'd solved one problem, but it created another problem in the-
Well, I, I think the board, I think we talked about it quite extensively, that we thought it was reasonable for somebody to buy a piece of property in the town of Tuffenborough and to come up and camp on it, you know, as a recreational piece of property. In the way it was written a few years ago, they really couldn't do that because they couldn't set it up, and it was two to three weeks, and then it had to, you know, move. And I think we decided to be, you know, I would say reasonable and say, all right, well, let's, let's allow them to do that. We decided we would put a limit on the number of, we've had so many discussions about this, but number, limit on the number of, um, you know, campsites, so to speak.
Maybe it should be like an acreage issue. I mean, if it's like two acres or one acre, it should be that, but if you have more than ten acres, you can do whatever you want.
I, I think they brought this up, but nobody could come up with exactly, well, how many acres is okay?
Yeah.
And I mean, that that was more the issue.
And the other thing is, you know, when you look at housing units, all right, it's by lot. It's not by, I mean, if you have too small a lot, you can't build houses, but if you have a hundred-acre lot, you're allowed to build-
To every two acres.
A residential structure.
If you have a hundred-acre lot, you're allowed to build two houses.
Two houses, right.
On any, on any lot that's-
Tuffenborough.
That, that is conformant, uh, or that's-
No, this grandfathered- An existing lot, titled to two houses.
So if you have a hundred acres, you can build two houses. If you have four acres, you can build two houses.
Well, clearly the town thought about the idea.
If, if you wanna build more houses, you have to subdivide.
Well, clearly the town thought about the idea of camping and its impact, because if you look at town zoning references, campsites or campgrounds, it limits it to twenty acres or greater. I mean, so obviously they'd weigh that, um, to some extent, but, or it's fifteen acres, it's some acreage.
But if you're not charging people-
That's a commercial.
That was, but I'm just, I'm just saying as a, you know, but if you're not charging-
Charging people, I mean, why can't I, I, I mean, I, I don't know. Why do I have a problem with that? That's my opinion. But I might be wrong if I just maybe-
I don't have any problem with somebody putting twenty, like I said, twenty-five, thirty, a hundred tents on my, you know, my neighbor's property and having a party. I think the party, the, the problem exists when it never leaves.
Yeah. And that's hard to regulate.
Yep.
Is it the prob-, oh, I, was it somebody, um, wow, one seventy-one? Was that the, yeah?
You could, actually, here's an idea. You could write that as, you know, how would exist, you know, what he's got, two to three, and larger by permit. So you could say, a permit could be applied for a larger event. Like if somebody wanted to have, I don't know, college get-together or something like that, wanted to have twenty-five, thirty, fifty, you know, I think they could apply for the permit. That way, if they, they apply, they get their permit. If it proves to be an issue, the following year, they don't get the permit.
But you have to have criteria for that permit.
Right.
Yeah. So many pool parties per people or whatever.
Well, it's, it's kind of a way of doing both things.
I think we're not gonna solve this problem. But they should end it.
They should end it.
And then like, like Jack said, Steve said, you know, about two acres, you could do it, a lot of acres, you know, so we need, we need to go with it, I don't know.
What's, uh, what's table that one and we'll figure that one out.
We'll return to that one.
I got a note about Greymont, I'm just trying to remember, I signed that earlier. Did we ban that?
Yeah, so Al Greymont, his irrevocable letter of credit is expiring and it needs to be extended, so the bank simply just sent us a letter requesting that the planning board just can continue it and sign off on it. We do it, um, every year. It's actually been decreased at one point because he did some of the improvements, but this year I believe it's the same. I, I don't have to keep where it's from, I mean.
Yeah.
All right, can we just put down a minute so we can sign it and that it did happen and such and so forth? Uh, other business? Is there anything? I don't think so. Anybody? Informational, oh, I'm sorry, planning board membership?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we know anybody?
Susan, Ted?
They don't live in town.
Oh.
They live in Wakefield.
Steve, you're here anyway.
Russ.
Why don't you just do it?
Yeah.
I told you last week that I can't serve on the board.
I'm rarely ever here. This is only the third time in a year and a half.
I know, obviously. I don't believe in this whole-
It's an alternate, but-
Process and this whole ZVA and planning board process, I just don't think it's-
It's libertarian.
Yep.
I don't think, I don't think it's working. My opinion.
Doesn't mean you couldn't be on the board.
I know.
You could say, you could say anything.
That's the best way to carry it?
Yeah. No, not. I get, I get my own issues coming. Hopefully I can have them in by Wednesday, but-
You have issues?
Yeah. Yeah, and people are making me do my site plan review on my gravel tip. And I gotta get it in, 'cause the planning board's letter said it might take six months, which was very discouraging to me.
I think you are the only one at this point, is that right?
You're the only one that's made any type of effort.
But my, my helper was not in the country for a little while.
Which I-
I need photocopies.
Which I know we had a conversation with him and it was, you know, it's, it's pretty complicated, but if you were talking to other people who got, you know, that, it's in their best interest to come and do that.
Right.
Yep. Because it's-
Well, so, and I'm not defending Mike and I'm not defending the planning board, but, but the ZVA, so I had the best luck with the ZVA when I made them visit my site two years ago. If they were to visit his site, they'd go, oh, yeah, it is a pit. I guess they'll let you have it. I think that's true with a lot of things, you know, when you, you come and talk to people, if, if they see what you're, what you're wanting to do and you can put some visual stuff out there to help them get a better picture.
Now, Google Earth would probably show you that.
Yeah, oh, it's, there's no question what it is.
I mean, they, uh, they had a full-time person there, counting trucks coming in and out. You know how many years?
A lot of years.
Ted?
Jeff, our brother Jeff.
Yeah.
That was his job. He sat there at Carlton's pit, counting the-
Loading the truck and putting on this one.
Loads of truck and counting.
It's tough work and somebody has to do it.
But I mean, it was a, it's a big pit.
When the economy was good there, ten years ago.
Yep.
It was, it was crazy, but, uh, the gravel for Shirley Way came off of that pit, and that was eighty-two, eighty-three?
Eighty-three, eighty-four.
Eighty-three, eighty-four. I owned it at the time, but they took all the gravel, you know, I mean, that's how long it's been.
You had done your proper documentation. You would be in this for better.
Well, well, see, that was, that's part of my whole problem, is I came to the select board with the present pit I own and said, I'd like to start the process. It might take two years to get it and, and permit my pit. And the select board that we had said, get out the door. We don't want the state in this town. If you do that, which is what the Witten family did, then the state followed them, came right in with the, and they said, okay, now everybody else has to do it.
You're, you're right, 'cause I went to meetings where people said, this is a can worm, so we don't wanna touch this.
Right.
And they were right.
Yeah, yeah.
But similar later, you have to deal with, and, and, you know, the-
And we are now there.
Well, the unfortunate thing is if, you know- Well, the unfortunate thing is if when the RSA was first passed and that whole provision